Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We welcome to our September School Board meeting. We're going to do things just a little different today because it's September 11th. And we want to remember those people that gave a lot. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read a statement from the administration and us. Following that statement, I would like to have just a moment of silence as we bow our heads and remember those that lost their lives. So having said that, let me read this. First of all, too, I'd like to excuse John and Angela. Angela's family's having some medical issues, and I think John's off playing somewhere. So we wish him well. Okay, before we begin this evening's meeting, we pause to remember the tragic events of September 11, excuse me, 2001. On that day, our nation was forever changed as nearly 3,000 innocent lives were lost in the terrorist attack on the United States of America. We honor the memory of those who perished, including first responders who showed remarkable courage and selflessness. And we stand in support of the families who continue to carry their loss. As we reflect, let us be reminded of the strength and compassion, the unity that carried our nation through those dark days. And I invite you, all of us, to join together in a moment of silence, not only for the honor of the lives of what we lost, but renew our commitment to kindness, service, and community. So if we could just maybe have a moment of silence and bow our heads for that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Also, I would like to go ahead and start our meeting by having a pledge of allegiance. And Mrs. Anderson is going to lead it. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and get started. Item 2.1, I believe, approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda. A second.
Got a motion of second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item 3.1, to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of August 14, 2025. Did everybody get a chance to look at those? Everything's good?
Yep. I move to approve as presented.
A second.
Motion of second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item 4.1, payroll and expense vouchers. Mrs. Davis?
So this is the payables and payroll and student activity vouchers. And this will be the last of the ones for fiscal year '25 as the encumbrance period is now over. So this is the last expenditures. We'll see if that...
Thank you.
I move to approve the financials as presented. A second.
Got a motion of second to approve the financials as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, let's go to 5.1, student staff recognition. Mr. Farnsworth.
At this time, before we can get into that, we have Board President John Larson on the computer.
Okay.
He can see you three, and we put the microphone, so hopefully you can hear him.
Where is he? San Diego?
He's somewhere.
Okay.
We're not quite sure.
This is where I wish, my background is where I wish I was, then you were all with me.
Well, I know where I wish you was.
So at this time, if the Whipple principal could come up, and she's got some presentations.
Cool.
Hello. Can you say hi?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, can you hear me okay? All right, so with me today, I have, I call them my legendary students and staff. And today, we have Mary Goss. She's a second grader at Whipple Ranch. And she was chosen by her teachers because she shows what it truly means to be a kind and caring person every single day. Mary, this is what the teachers sent to me. So Mary is sweet and friendly to everyone she meets. She's always willing to help her classmates and teachers, and she shows great compassion when someone is having a hard day. Mary thinks about other people's feelings, and she treats others with respect and empathy always. Her teachers say that she is thoughtful, dependable, always ready to lend a hand. Mary's caring heart and positive attitude make her a wonderful friend and a role model for all of her classmates. We are really proud of you, Mary, and you set such a good example for Whipple Ranch Elementary. Your character and actions reflect the values of kindness, compassion, and empathy every day, and you are such a good Whipple Ranch cougar. And I have, the board has this for you, an award, okay? And I have a gift for you when we go, okay? So we'll leave that right here. Do you want to switch Truss for a minute? Switch spots with Truss? Okay. All right. Ironically, Truss is also a second grader at Whipple Ranch, and I just realized today that they're both in the same class. So also, with great pride, we like to recognize Truss Rowe. He is the second grader at our school, and he was chosen also by his teachers because he truly represents the values and spirit of our school. Truss is an exceptional young man who demonstrates empathy, kindness, and respect in all that he does. He goes out of his way to help his classmates, offering a listening ear or helping hand whenever someone is in need. His teachers describe him as a student who not only thrives or strives for academic excellence, but also uplifts those around him with his positive attitude and generous heart. In addition to being responsible, Truss carries himself with a sense of maturity well beyond his years. He is a true gentleman, which I actually saw today in class. Mrs. Lopez's class came to read, or you read to Mrs. Lopez's class, and he gave up his seat for a young lady, and he stood so she could sit, and he read to her.
I gave those seats to everyone that I read to.
Oh, to everyone that he read to. I just saw one. So good job, Truss. He's always thoughtful, polite, and he does the right thing, even when no one is watching. We are really proud to honor you, Truss, for the example you set each day at Whipple Ranch. Your character and actions reflect the values of hard work, perseverance, and kindness shows every day, and you are a great Whipple Ranch cougar, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to have you hold that, and I have a present for you, too, okay? You want to stand next to Mary for me? Good job. Okay. Do you see? This is why I come back every day.
Yeah. Because she's my true friend.
She is a true friend. I love it.
Yeah. Same with Truss.
Same with Truss?
Yeah, same.
So the next person I want to recognize is Ms. Ashley Umfriss. So she is our instructional coach at Whipple Ranch, and she's been with us for the past four years, right? Four? I don't know why it's gone so fast.
I think four years.
You think four years?
Yeah.
She has made an incredible impact on our staff, our students, and our community. Ashley's someone who lifts others up. She's always helpful, kind, friendly, greeting everyone with a smile, and always a cheerful spirit. Her compassion and encouragement shine through in every interaction that she has. She's constantly inspiring those around her to grow and to believe in themselves. As a leader, Ashley is strong, fair, and reliable. She works tirelessly to support teachers and staff, always putting students at the heart of everything that she does. She is loyal to her school, creative in finding solutions, and committed to ensuring that every child has the opportunity to succeed. Her positive energy and unwavering dedication make her not only a trusted colleague, but also a true role model. Ashley's influence reaches far beyond even the academics. She makes our school a better place through her love, support, and commitment to excellence. We are proud to honor Mrs. Ashley Umfriss for the difference she makes each and every day at Whipple Ranch Elementary. She is a true example of leadership, compassion, and dedication. So do we have to do the pictures?
Yes, we have to do the pictures.
Okay, so we're going to stand up here. Put this down here.
I'm going to set this.
Sure.
Yeah.
If you want to set it, you can. You want to hold it open, Mary? Ready? One, two, three.
So can we go ahead and give the parents a round of applause also?
Thank you, Ashley. Congratulations, guys. Oh, congratulations. Thank you for being a great cougar.
You guys are awesome.
Yep. Way. This is for you.
Oh, a goodie bag, too. What do you know?
That's going to have a wolf birthday.
I didn't even know.
Are you kidding me?
I love these.
Oh, this is so old.
And according to my agenda, we don't have any more gifts to give out. Is that correct?
We're out of luck.
Out of luck, okay. Let's go ahead and go to 5.2, first reading of model policy update. Dr. Farnsworth?
So the legislative session has ended, and there were quite a few changes. And so you'll see, this is the first reading. One thing that I want to point out to the board is that one of the policy updates is for mandatory reporting, and this is for child abuse, sexual abuse. The law specifically states that school board members are now expected, if you come in contact with firsthand knowledge, that you are required to be a mandatory reporter to the police. And so it's a change in the state, and I just want to make sure you're aware of that. But if that ever happens to you, and someone comes up to you in the grocery store and says, "I don't know if you know this, but so-and-so," then you may have a responsibility to report. The way that this changed now, it's not to SRO, it's not to DCS, it's straight to the police.
Really?
And so if that happens, call the dispatch number, and then they will take a report number and refer that out to officers investigating. And always call us, and we'll help work with you.
Anything else in this policy we need to be aware of?
No, we're already implementing the no cell phones on campus and limiting the wireless access for students on our campuses, and our IT department has been doing that. But that's the latest and greatest in terms of policy changes.
Okay, well, thank you very much. This obviously is the first reading, so it's not an action item. John, do you have any questions or anything on that?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to 5.3, then, principal reports. Dr. Farnsworth.
So again, I just want to thank our principals for doing a hard, difficult, lonely job. They've submitted their reports, and I want to thank them for the reports that they do submit and the highlights that are happening on each of their campuses.
Thank you. We do appreciate them.
Yes, I appreciate them also. It's good to have them back. So you guys got any questions on the reports or want to make a comment? Okay, let's go to 5.4, monthly financial report. Mrs. Davis?
Thank you. So if you remember, part of my annual report, I said that I'd start doing monthly financial reports. So this is the first one. You have a graph there of the MNO budget, which shows you the budget of $23.8 million, and then the year-to-date expenditures. So this is the actual expenditures as of 9/3 of $2.8 million. And then the encumbrance. So just as a reminder, encumbrances are the obligated expenditures, but not actual expenditures. So those are at $11.7 million, which is a majority of salaries and benefits. So that's why that is so large. But again, they're not spent actuals, but they're obligated expenditures, which leaves us a current budget balance of $9.2 million for this year. Now, this does not, this was the adopted budget, which did not include the 2% inflation that the legislature passed, because of course, they did not pass it till June 30th. So I'll be doing a revised budget by December that will have that inflation. So our budget will go up at that time. So that's the MNO budget. And then if you look at the second, if you looked at the second one, the DAA budget, which is our capital budget, the budget is $3.1 million. So we've actually spent $588,000. Our encumbrance is at this time is $680,000, which gives us an ending budget balance of $1.8 million. So that will be mostly for facility repairs and maintenances, anything like that. We did currently buy a special ed bus, which was desperately needed. We need more buses, but unfortunately, with this type of a budget, that's not possible. So we're working, I know Frank and I are working on, and Dr. Farnsworth are working on, a schedule of bus replacements. But with buses and facilities, this is not a good budget to have. But we do the best we can, and then with the school facilities board, we'll do what we can, but they're even strapped for money at this time. Just got a report from ASBO that the money that they got this year is covering the projects that they didn't cover for last year. So it's going to be tight this next year with the SFD.
I'm afraid it's going to get tighter and tighter as we get further. But Dr. Farnsworth did say that we might still have a pretty good carryover, maybe four and a half, five million?
Yes. Yeah, so I'll be working on the AFAR this month. I'll be bringing that to you October 2nd, and it does look like we will have a very good carryover for both MNO and capital.
When you guys do develop that schedule of the transportation buses and such that are going to need replacement, can you please share that with us as well?
Absolutely. Yes, we'll definitely bring that to you guys. Yeah, as well as our capital plan. Frank's been working on the capital plan for the facilities and a good maintenance program, so we'll definitely be bringing all that to you guys.
Great, thank you.
And that's my report for you guys.
And I just want to point out to the board that the state of Arizona has been found negligent of capital finance funding, and that was a recent court finding this summer. So at the ASBA legal conference, there's a lot of legal maneuvering with the state and with the people who fought the battle. And so we know that they need to pay more money for school facilities. We know that they're not living up to their responsibilities, but we also know that the state legislature is going to appeal, 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 because they, there's just too many projects, which, I mean, there's, I think, $137 million above what they've allocated for this year. So...
But that was good news for them. This is a lawsuit that's been going on for eight years, and the fact that they won it is good. And yeah, they are going to appeal it, but the lawyers, because we got the same report at ASBO this week, but they were very encouraged by it. And so the state's going to have to do something.
Yep. So maybe in another eight years, we'll figure out something, huh?
Maybe.
Yeah, that's really unfortunate. You guys have any questions?
No.
Okay, let's move to the next one, 5.5, which is superintendent's report.
So just a couple of highlights. I was able to attend the ASBA legal conference with Stacy and John and get the legal updates. I've started to meet with all of the campus principals and all of the directors and start reviewing their SMART goals for the year, and so I'm in the middle of that process. I've gone to every campus and have distributed our posters with the new vision, mission, and guiding principles, and I've spoken to every faculty. And so every classroom should have those, every department should have those, and so we're continuously communicating that here's the new expectations for that. And with the help with our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, she and I have started visiting each campus to talk about data. And we've been doing data walks and some classroom visits to see how are students doing, how are our teachers doing, what does the data indicate so far, and like, what kind of interventions are we going to start putting in place throughout the course of the year? So we're at various different levels on various different campuses, but I'm very encouraged by what the principals are doing with their staff to start having those conversations and moving the needle on that academic achievement and growth. So those are just some of the highlights.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Stacy, since you went to that, do you have anything you want to bring up?
No, it was good. The political agenda passed. Sent Courtney the, what they changed, sent Rad Master to send it out to you guys.
Okay.
Kind of fighting for the same thing as past years.
A lot of change, huh?
No.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. That's not an action item. Let's talk a little bit on discussion of superintendent goals. Dr. Farnsworth?
So it's that time of year where we look at the goals that I've selected, and I've put those in for your review. I just wanted you to be aware of what I'm proposing. I'm welcoming any feedback that you have. And just for the public, there's four areas that I'm using as a framework for my professional goals for the district. I'm looking at the identity of the district. I'm looking at the culture of the district. I'm looking at the academics of the district, and then the continuous improvements efforts of the district. So I've started putting goals into each one of those buckets, and as we go throughout the year, I'm sure those are going to grow. But you can see right now some of my thoughts and some of the metrics that I'll be looking for, and I'm open to feedback or suggestions or anything else that you guys would like me to look at in terms of my goals for the year.
Is that something that maybe would be on the, our study session to discuss some of that stuff?
I do have it on as a discussion item on our upcoming study session for September 23rd. I wanted you to have it in advance. Feel free to let me know what your thoughts are, but I wanted you to be aware and feel free to give me any feedback of what you'd like me to see, what you would like me to do.
I thought it looked really good.
Okay.
That wouldn't change anything.
Thank you. I for one am appreciative of what you've done, what you brought to our school and the hard work that you do. I don't think it goes unnoticed. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and go to the classified personnel employment. Dr. Farnsworth?
As you can see there, there's, I think, Shaylee, if you can scroll down a little bit, I think there's, we've got some substitutes, event workers, and then a kindergarten aide, and we would ask that you would approve those for hire.
I move to approve as presented.
A second.
Okay, we got a motion of second to approve as presented. Any other discussion? If not... If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, let's go to 6.1, or excuse me, 6.2, we just was at 6.1. Certified Personnel Transfers, Resignations, and Terminations. Dr. Farnsworth.
I think we just have two people on this item here, and we're so sad to see our counselor at the junior high leave, and she, she's done a great job for the junior high, and so if anyone's watching that's a counselor, we're looking at the junior high, and we're also transferring that, that one individual from a substitute contract. She's also working at the junior high and is teaching full-time language arts.
I move to, to approve certified employment actions as presented.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second to approve the certified employment actions as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, approval of city, of Cholo IGA. Dr. Farnsworth.
So we've had a longstanding relationship with the city of Cholo. This is a, an IGA that we've had for multiple years. They did add a few elements on our behalf, some audiovisual equipment that they're going to be donating to our, one of our CTE classes, and Rocky Merrill, who's the teacher, and he's aware of all this. So they've already approved the IGA, and the expectation is that with this new audiovisual equipment, that our students, when asked by the city, will go to different events, record, edit, publish, and so we're excited, we appreciate the city of Cholo, and I see no, no resignations about, no, no issues about adopting this IGA with the city.
Good, I'm glad that they threw in, and we're happy to reciprocate, so. Rocky does a great job.
I move to approve the city of Cholo IGA as presented.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve the IGA as presented by the city of Cholo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, 6.4, Property Transfer to Clay Springs Foundation. Dr. Farnsworth.
So 10 years ago, the Cholo Unified School District entered into a contract with the county, and they took over the Clay Springs School building and property. And for the last 10 years, the county has been managing that, and now there was a proposal that they would like to sell the property, which, which is in the contract, which is perfectly legal, to the Clay Springs Foundation. And, but in the contract, it states that the Cholo Unified School District shall have the first right of refusal. So we, we get to sign off on the, on the transfer of the property. I've worked with our legal department, and we've been able to add language into the, the deed in the contract, so that my recommendation is that, yes, let's waive our first right of refusal. That's the, that's the motion, is that we're waiving our right, and that that property should go to the Clay Springs Foundation, because we're, we're proposing that we're putting in language into the, the deed for a deed restriction, that they cannot ever use that property for a charter school, a homeschool, a private school, or any type of educational facility. And they agreed to that, and both attorneys for the county and our attorney have agreed to that language, and so I'm recommending to the board that we approve the waiving of our first right of refusal, so the property will go to them for a dollar.
You know, I thought that was in the original contract, but evidently not, huh?
It was in the original contract, but now that they're ready to sell it to the, to the Clay Springs Foundation, a new contract would have to be developed, and so our attorney said, we're going to put it in the deed, so wherever the deed goes, whoever they sell it to, it's going to be a deed restriction forever and ever and ever. And I, I really like that nuance in the, in the negotiation, so it's not going to be in the contract, it'll be in the contract but also in the deed.
And you're happy with the language that's in the new contract?
We're very happy with the language, and I've talked extensively with the board president and make sure he was aware that this was the negotiation, and I feel like it's in the best interest of not only Clay Springs, but also in Cholo, that they can have the building, they can use the building, but we're not going to allow them to put a school or homeschool or any type of educational facility out there.
John, do you have any comments on that? Are you, you're good on that?
I don't. Just back when we originally did this, that was, one of the things that I insisted on was that we have right of first refusal, and so this has all worked out well, I think, and it's, it's been a wonderful thing for them to have out in the community, and I hope it continues to be an advantage to them and their, their folks out there.
Right, I agree. Okay.
I move to approve the waiving of the right of first refusal for the property transfer to the Clay Springs Foundation as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to waive the right of the first, first right of refusal on the Clay Springs property as presented. Did I get that right? Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you, John. I don't, they see Scott here today as, he's covering, we've had quite a few athletic events, we've had a cross-country meet all day, and so there, there's quite a few events. We have volleyball games tonight, cross-country events, and so they're, they're like spread out covering events tonight. That is his job, so.
That is his job.
You want to take this, or you want me to?
I'll, I'll take, I'll answer any question. So under the advice of the board president, we, we went out to renegotiate our media contract and contacted other vendors who may want to cover our athletic events. What you see in front of you is an increase in, in revenue sharing that this, the new media contract reveals. So the Simmons contract, which is attached to the old contract, but the fees have gone up through the negotiations of Mr. Hoffmeyer and the Simmons Media, and so they have agreed to this, these, this pricing structure. No other media groups were able to compete, and so we recommend that the board approve the contract with Simmons Media with the new pricing structure.
And this is revenue that the district will receive in our athletics?
Correct.
This goes into the athletics or district-wide?
I'm not exactly sure where in the budget line item it goes, but I know these are funds that we would recoup. I would imagine they would go into the athletic pot.
Right. Okay, well, good job, Scott, even though you're not here. You guys have any more questions? You happy?
That's the only thing I had. I move to approve the activity broadcasting agreement with Simmons Media for all 2025-26 school year activities as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the activity broadcasting agreement with Simmons Media for all of 2025-26 school year activities as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, 6.6, Outreach Intervention. Dr. Farnsworth.
So we have a SIG grant that pays up to 10 hours of outreach, and so Reagan Roach, our WMI coordinator, she does a lot of after-hours, calling, coaching, mentoring, home visits, and so this, this would allow her to get compensated for those after-hours visits, up to 10 hours, and it's paid out of the SIG grant. We recommend that you would approve that.
Very good.
Interventionist.
Yep.
I move to approve the outreach interventionist position as presented. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the outreach intervention as presented. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to confirm it was 10 hours per week, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, good, good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, back to, or up to 6.7, a WRE self-contained professional, paraprofessional position. Dr. Farnsworth.
As, as we've discussed from time to time in special education, if there are students that through the IEP process require more individualized attention, or maybe we have a student that moves into our district that has that in their IEP, that they have maybe a one-on-one aide, we are obligated to provide that, and so looking at our staffing model, we are asking the school board to approve a brand-new position to meet the needs of, of a particular student with, with an IEP that outlines that they need more, more support.
Are we, we are reimbursed by the, by the state or that on us?
We, we do file Medicaid, and I'm, and maybe Shaylee can kind of fill in the gaps, but we do file Medicaid reports, so we get reimbursed, and then I know our Director of Special Education will be applying for a new grant this year for high-needs students that we can get reimbursed from the state. We have not been approved yet, but I know we're going to be applying for that grant.
Okay.
And then those, those students do get a higher weight from the state for funding.
Rightfully so, we want to give a good service.
Absolutely.
Appreciate those that are doing that, so. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the 32-hour paraprofessional position for Whipple Ranch Elementary Self-Continue Classroom as presented. I'll second that.
Any other comment? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 32-hour paraprofessional position for the Whipple Ranch Elementary Self-Continue Classroom as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you very much. Gifts and donations. Want to do it, or you want me to?
Go right ahead, sir.
Go for it.
We, we, we have several donations from the community, so you can see there, the first several are at the high school, Highline Vending, I don't know, Ohio Pile Prints, Frank DiMatto, Athletics K-12 Licensing, Culinary to Mr. Crawford, cooking equipment, the amount of $4,000. At the junior high, White Mountain Women's Club, $200, and school supplies for $670.50. And at Whipple, Amazon School Supplies totaling $1,600. White Mountain Women's Club, again, they're donating school supplies under $123.50. At Nicholas, Students Without Backpacks, the Elk Riders have donated backpack supplies for $363, and the White Mountain Women's Club, they've been very busy donating to everyone $200. So we just want to publicly thank all of those community partners for their donations and ask that the board approve those.
As well do we want to thank them, and we appreciate all the, the good help that we get from people in this city. Thank them. Any, any comment on that? Kelly, you got anything on that?
Nope, just with the big thanks, I move to approve.
I'll second.
We got a big thanks with the move to approve, gifts and donations as presented. We've always talked about our appreciation for that.
Always.
Always. With that in mind, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Very good, thank you. Let's go to 6.9. I'll get there in a second. Soul Source Vendor. Mrs. Davis.
So when we have a vendor that we can only get the products or services from one person or one vendor, I should say, we have to bring that to the board for approval. So this year's theatrical performance will, is, that copyright is only, can be provided by Music Theater International, so this is a soul source vendor. We have double-checked, Ms. Whipple has double-checked that, and so this will be a soul source vendor. So I ask that you approve this soul source vendor.
Okay, well, I hope they do well at this.
I move to approve the soul source vendor as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the soul source vendor as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries, thank you very much. Let's go to 610, Mrs. Davis.
So anytime we have a procurement that's over $100,000, again, that has to come to the board for approval. So the new sped bus that we're purchasing from Canyon State Bus, even though it's through a cooperative, it's $183,000, so we ask that the board approve the purchase of the new sped bus from Canyon State Bus.
I move to approve the purchase of one new special education bus as presented. Second that.
So through this cooperative, we get a little bit better price, is that correct, or?
No.
No.
Not necessarily, unfortunately, but it, so that we don't have to go out to bid, which can take up to several months, and it's.
And the cost of going out.
Yep, and, yeah, the cost actually for going out to bid can be more than this as well. It, it saves us time, and they do do, they have great buses, Canyon State does, over the other buses. Now, we do check the other buses that are on the cooperatives, and Canyon State does have the better buses and, and the state.
And I think you were saying it's a Bluebird, is that correct?
Bluebird.
Yep.
And they have a great track record.
Yes, they're very good. Okay. Did we get a motion, or no?
We have a motion, do we have to vote?
We got to vote?
We need to.
Let's do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Okay, let's go to 6.11, School Property Disposal. Mrs. Davis.
We just have one today, and that's for vehicles, for a vehicle.
It's a Dodge Ram pickup.
It says under there.
Thousand miles.
How many?
116 or 117.
That's not bad.
You ride them hard, though.
Oh, well, underneath it says reason for disposal, wore out.
I move to approve all school property items for disposal as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve all school property items as, for their disposition as presented by the administration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Again, let's go to 6.12, Student Fundraising Activities. Dr. Farnsworth.
So it's a flurry of activity at the high school. You can see all of their fundraising activities on behalf of the student council, so thank you for the student council for getting those in, and we would ask that the, the board approve those fundraising activities.
I move to approve the student fundraising activities as presented. I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve all student fundraising activities. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, motion carries. Now, let's go to 6.13. I can get there. Future Agenda Items. Nothing? John, you got anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, well, we're through that one then. 7.1, no one wants to adjust, address the board, we don't have any paperwork on that, so we'll zip right through that one, too. Adjournment with our work session, session, I'm going to get new front teeth pretty quick, and I could talk better, so. Work session, September 23rd, that's where we're at the district office.
That will be at 5:30.
5:30. Does it say that?
No. Is it 5?
5:00.
It's 5:30. That's right, we agreed on that.
I'm sure we'll get a.
We can change it if we want. Do you, do you guys are good with 5:30 or 5?
Doesn't matter to me.
I don't care.
As long as I get a little note saying that you're going to miss it if you don't get there.
Reminder.
As of right now, we're going to say 5:30, because that's what I have in my calendar, and then if we need to adjust it earlier, that would allow us to get a little, I mean, we're going to provide dinner, so having a.
Breather.
A breather to get, to go get the food, bring it back, I think 5:30 would be a good start time.
Perfect.
Our next regular, should we do adjourn first? You guys want to adjourn? Do we have to do the, we're adjourned?
A motion to adjourn.
You got to have a motion for that?
Yes.
I just want to go anyway.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and our next regular scheduled board meeting would be October 2nd, here in this building, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're done.
Thank you.